Uh, here.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back. Vice Chair George Salmon.
Here.
Thank you, George.
All right. Thank you, George. Just a quick announcement. We do have interpreters joining us this evening. If you would like to listen to this meeting in Spanish, we do provide the headsets on the back of the table. We will now move on to public comment. Does anyone have a public comment on a topic not in the agenda? As a reminder, the council may not discuss or take actions on items not on the agenda.
We do have an one in person public comment. I'd like to invite the newly appointed Sheriff Kenneth Bender.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you so much, Chair Prado. Honorable members of the council, thank you for having me tonight. I want to also recognize Supervisor Goché who's here as well and also provided the invitation. This is just a quick introduction. My name is Ken Bender. The board, as you may have followed in the news last week, appointed me to be the sheriff of San Mateo County. And I'll just tell you, it's it's the honor of a lifetime, but there's also a lot of responsibility that comes with it. And so I'm just here to let you know, this is the North Fair Oaks community is very important to the sheriff's office. It's unincorporated, so that's where the sheriff's office responds to all nine one one calls and other calls for service. We work with CHP to make sure there's traffic enforcement as well. And so I just really wanted to come here and introduce myself to you, make myself available to let you know that we're in it to make sure that you're getting the service that you need and that you deserve and that you expect. And if you're not, let me know. I've got the captains I'll get on to make sure you're getting what you need. And so we just want to deliver that service in a way that's that provides protection, does it in a compassionate way and serves the way we're supposed to. So with that, just it's an honor to meet each of you and look forward to seeing you in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sheriff, and welcome to our community, and we look forward to working with you.
Yeah. Do we have any other public comments in person or online? Do not. Back to Chair, I think George has his hand up.
Uh, George?
Thank you. I wish I could be there in person today. Sheriff, welcome to the team. Looking forward to working with you. I we've got a lot going on in the community, and I know this is your very first run at this, and so forgive me if this is very too if this is too soon to bring this up. However, something to take into consideration. I understand that the substation that we have in on Middlefield in North Fair Oaks is potentially scheduled to be closed. I would urge you to take that into consideration and try to keep it open and potentially get some additional patrols here. So not looking for an answer today, but just something to put in your ears since since you're here in person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more public comment. Back to Chair.
Great. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Can I get a roll call vote?
So more.
Motion passes. We will now move along to the first agenda item. The.
Let's do a roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Yeah. Okay, commensy roll call vote. Vice Chair Salmon.
Here.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitney.
Hi.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Parisi.
Yes.
Councilmember Aponte.
Yes.
And Chair Prado.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion pass. So we'll now move on to our first agenda item. A motion item from the Planning and Building Department. This is a motion for off-street parking exemption presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Jonathan Brunz, and I am a planner with the Planning Department. I'm here to give a short presentation on an off-street parking exception request at six thirty twelfth Avenue in the North Fair Oaks neighborhood. The applicant is Nick Thomas. I'm told he's on Zoom tonight if there are questions that he is better equipped to answer than myself. However, most questions I expect I will be answering. The county file number is PLN twenty twenty five zero zero three nineteen. The location again is six thirty twelfth Avenue, North Fair Oaks. And this is for the consideration of an off-street parking exception to allow for the continued use of one covered parking space where two covered parking spaces are required. The project is associated with an interior remodel and a minor expansion of the existing residence to allow for the creation of a third bedroom. Next slide, please. So this is a recap, a little bit of what I just said. So expansion to and allow for the continued use of a one-car garage on site that's existing. It's associated with an active building permit for the active remodel and the minor expansion. The proposed project expansion to the residence does not affect the square footage of the existing garage. Excellent, please. This slide here, forgive that it's a little small there on the projector there. That's trying to be the outline of the subject property. It's an interior lot towards the end of Twelfth Avenue, which is a dead-end street connecting up to North Fair Oaks Avenue. Excellent. This is a street view from Google Maps of the existing property. The house itself there, of course, is covered a little bit by the tree, but you can see the driveway and the existing garage there kind of in the background. For planning and buildings purposes, it is considered a one oversized one-call garage. Excellent. These are plan sets that have been submitted for the building permit and added to the planning permit. The left side is the currently existing approved floor plan, a two-bedroom house with a one-call garage. On the right is the proposed floor plan. Kind of towards the top is where the house expansion is happening, and the garage is there as well. I would note that on the proposed floor plan there, there's a little notch at the top left-hand side, and this does not appear on the approved floor plan. That's just a minor error. That notch does exist right now. It's on the survey of the property that was taken. Sorry that I just don't have that up there on the plan set, but that little notch there is existing. The garage itself is not being changed as a result of this building permit or exception request. Excellent. So the off-street parking, the establishment and maintenance of the off-street parking facilities as proposed are nearly compliance with the requirements set forth in section eight point three four four point zero three zero of the zoning regulations. So the existing development does not leave enough space to expand the existing garage to be the required two-car garage that we would require for a two-or-more-bed house. The oversized driveway on the site allows for continued off-street parking, albeit uncovered. The changes do not, or this exception would not change the existing situation on the property. It's not changing the fact that it's a single-family residence. The project complies with other prospects of the zoning regulations and community plan for this specific parking exception that's being asked for. Excellent. So of course, this area is part of the North Fair Oaks Community Plan Zone. It is zoned R one S seven three, so single-family residential, five thousand square foot minimum parcel size zoning district. The house itself right now is an existing structure that's legal non-conforming, meaning that it has a one-call garage, two-bedroom house. Today's standards would require a two-bed house. Back in the day, they figured the one-car garage was perfectly fine. The off-street parking exception will continue the use of the one-car cover parking space. Of course, like I said, where two covered spaces are required, and the one uncovered off-street parking spot will be used in the existing driveway. The driveway is not affected by the interior remodel project stroke, so they're not changing its size or scope or something like that. Next slide, please. It is recommended that the North Fair Oaks Community Council provide a recommendation to the director of planning and building on the proposed off-street parking exception to allow for the continued use of a one-call garage where two covered parking spaces are required. Excellent, please. And that concludes my presentation. I will take your questions if there are any.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Are there any comments from council members?
Yes. Were there any notifications to neighbors and were there any comments or concerns from neighbors?
There was a public notice sent out ten days prior to this meeting. It was sent in both English and Spanish to all residences within a three-hundred-foot diameter or radius of the project site. One comment was received from a neighbor asking about how this would specifically affect their house. It was sent to me, and I have answered them. Of course, if they continue to have questions, they will gain free to continue to email me. Forgive me that I don't have their name off the off the top of my head right now, but that's the only public correspondence I have received.
Any other comments? Yes. Council Appointed.
I believe this is the second or third exemption brought to the council this year. So if you could just help me clarify, allowing reduced parking requirements, does that set precedent to other similar-sized parcels seeking to add bedrooms without providing additional covered parking?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the mid part of your question? I didn't hear it for real good.
So providing exemptions, does that create any precedent to other small parcels adding bedrooms but not additional covered parking?
I don't know about adding precedence to it. I suppose one could see it that way. Other properties that have a similar situation here who want to add a second or third bedroom and feel that they don't have the space to expand their existing garage are able to apply for this exception. It's open to anyone who is willing to apply in this area. They, of course, go through reviews with us. They come to y'all for a recommendation. Yeah, I again, I don't think setting a precedence is the right way because it's certainly open to anyone to apply for.
And has anyone ever been rejected?
Not any of mine. Off the top of my head, I cannot think of one that has been rejected. I would imagine perhaps it's happened in the past, but I couldn't give you an example right now.
Thank you. Our deputy counsel, please.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that as a as a legal matter, each application is considered individually on its merits, and it wouldn't establish any legal precedent for a future application.
Any other council members have any comments or questions? Yes.
I'm just generally in favor of people trying to do the best they can with the property they have, and unless they're building right up to the lot line or staring into their neighbor's living room, it's all good with me, so I'm probably going to support this. That's it.
Ever Rodriguez?
Yep, thank you. Sometimes there are recommendations by the fire department to, you know, depending on the, I guess, the the space limitations for access. Was there anything in this in this particular case from the fire department?
Not for the off-street parking exception. I don't know if, off the top of my head, if fire was reached out to for the building permit. I would imagine they were, but I don't have the particulars on that. For this planning-related permit, they were not.
If there are no other comments, I do have a comment. You said there is one parking garage, but it's oversized. My question to you is, is the oversized parking garage the equivalent of two for two vehicles? No, it is not. What is the square foot of the property?
Um, give me one second. This parcel size is five thousand three hundred forty-three square foot.
Okay, so anything above five thousand is considered more than standard, is that correct? Because five thousand is standard?
Five thousand is the minimum, yeah.
Is the minimum, okay. Okay, no, any other comments? No?
Can I?
Yes.
I had just one comment and to, I guess, to the concern of Councilmember Aponte. Is right in in wondering about, you know, setting a precedent, providing these kind of exceptions, particularly in an area that it that has, you know, problems related to parking specifically. Because I guess in a way, we can think of an exception being, you know, another car that has to park on the street. And so, you know, when when we think about that and considering the density and the parking problems that our community has, it should be a valid concern for for the council.
Absolutely. Can you confirm how many, because I saw in the picture there, it's a pretty long driveway?
Yeah.
How many vehicles can park on their property in the driveway?
I did not do that kind of analysis, I'm sorry. The the point of the off-street parking exception is that instead of covered parking, uncovered parking would suffice. But like I said, I could not give you a a good figure of how many cars we think could park on that driveway.
Yes, one more comment?
Yeah, I drove by it, and it's pretty long and wide. I mean, depending on how people feel comfortable parking, you could back them in straight back, but there's also wide enough to do two and then behind it. So I think this is to another council member's point. This is, we have been asked for these exceptions, and we've granted them for all the reasons people have said here, but this one feels a little different. Like, they should be able to accommodate the entire family in uncovered parking on their property.
Okay.
Based on my observations and what I do, my own.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, can I then get a motion for this item?
A public.
Or a public comment?
If you would like to comment on agenda number four, please use the raise hands feature on Zoom or bring a speaker slip to the clerk during this time. You'll be given two minutes to speak. Oh, Nick Thomas online has his hand up. Oh, I think he just has a comment. Nick, Nick, you can just speak.
Hi, I'm, first of all, thank you for the board to for taking on this case, and and I really appreciate the deliberation that you guys have put into this. As the architect, we I did work with the client extensively to try to figure out different ways that we could solve this parking issue. Expanding the garage really is not feasible. In terms of width, we'd have to expand it all the way to the face of the house. And if you can see in floor plans, there is no access to the rear yard if we do do that. Therefore, it actually does become a fire department issue, as in the fire department wouldn't be able to access the rear yard. Not feasibly. And basically, I think that was the main reason. So expanding it in terms of width doesn't wasn't feasible, and extending it forward into the to the driveway would create a tandem parking situation inside the garage itself, which would mean also basically doubling the size of the garage, which just wasn't very economically feasible for us for the scale of this project. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last call for public comment. Okay, no more public comment. Back to Chair.
Yes, can I get a motion then for this item? There are no other comments?
Yes, I make the motion.
You second it? I'll second it. Okay, can we get a roll call then, please?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salmon.
Support it. Let them build.
Councilmember Whitney. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Parisi.
Yes.
Councilmember Aponte.
Yeah.
And Chair Prada.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Thomas, I'll reach out to you next week.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Thank you, too. We will now move on to item five. We have a presentation from the Office of Arts and Culture from the county of San Mateo. Presentation exploring potential community art spaces and underutilized space within North Fair Oaks. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Amy Shapiro. I'm the Director of the Office of Arts and Culture, and I run that office along with my colleague Mara Grimes, who's nodding her head and waving. Yes. So we have been working with Supervisor Goché on looking at possible spaces to have a community arts center. So the building that Job Train is currently in, half of it is mostly empty. And so we've been looking at how we could possibly use that space to bring arts and cultural experiences to North Fair Oaks. So first off, I want to say you all are the experts of your own community. So it's really important to us that we get feedback and ideas from those who live here. So some things we've been talking about and sort of thinking about creatively is possibly, this would be, this could be a multi-use space. There could be exhibition space there. There could be artist workshops. There could be community arts events. We see also an opportunity for space sharing for other organizations that may not have space to hold a meeting or a workshop or a presentation. And what the Office of Arts and Culture does is really try to make the arts accessible to as many people as we can throughout the county. And we know that in unincorporated areas, that tends to be a little bit harder. And so we really want to be able to use this space in a way that serves North Fair Oaks. And mostly, I want to get feedback from from those here, from the council, as well as, you know, thinking about what is missing here, what could be missing, what could engage the community in arts and cultural resources that the county can help provide and be a partner to the community here. So I don't have a huge presentation with lots of slides, but more so really putting out there this idea. We hope to be having some listening sessions with more members of the community to really have that input. We're really interested in this serving the community of folks who live here. Are there any questions, thoughts, ideas? I have a pencil.
Thank you for your information. Council members, are there any, please?
Um, this is fantastic. I'm so excited to hear this. No slides needed. This is all enthusiasm. Um, I am curious what, I know you're at the beginning stages, but if you've looked at other partners, because there are some big players like the Reich Center on Edison that does a lot of community arts, cultural events and other, you know, gardening, other things. So I'm just curious if you've started exploring community-based partners for or are they going to be part of your listening tour as you're building this out?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm really hoping to have as many stakeholders as possible in the room when we have these listening sessions. I haven't directly reached out. I've had some initial conversations with Casa Circulo because they're right across the street, but that's kind of been it. I I think it's important that this center be able to bring folks to the neighborhood, but also a lot of folks live here, work here, stay here. And to me, that feedback is kind of a priority before some of the other organizations that are a tiny bit further away. But part of our job in the Office of Arts and Culture is connecting organizations, is staying connected to knowing what's what's happening in the cultural life of all who live here. So we're, we love partnering with everyone, but I really want it to be something that people have access to and feel welcomed in. And many different kinds of people live here and live in the county, and so how can we make that space available? Maybe there's things the the Reiki Center doesn't supply that North Fair Oaks wants to see or that Casa Circulo can't provide that the community is looking for, doesn't know they're looking for yet, but would really like to see here.
Thank you. George, you're online. You have a question?
No, I have a comment. I love the idea. Thanks for bringing this to us. You mentioned if we had any comments or ideas, we should bring them up. Have you guys ever considered a maker space, just a place for for kids to come and build, design, engineer, and just kind of have it open for the community?
Yeah, that's a a great question also. We envision this as a totally multi-use space, so a maker space is totally possible. I don't know the square footage, and I'm not very good at imagining what that could be, but it's probably three times the size of my house, which is about nine hundred square feet, is how I can envision it. It's really large. There's space to have a making area, space to, while there's a making area there, have gallery walls up. There's room to maybe eventually have some kind of makeshift performance space. So that is completely a possibility. I mean, right now, you know, our restrictions are, you know, what we can imagine and what we can afford to do with the space, which might be minimal, but artists are scrappy, and we are, we will make everything work in there. And then just our capacity for being there. There's two of us in the office, but I think we can find ways to have the space be open. So maybe there's, you know, one night a week where there's a maker space and and an artist there to facilitate that or have it be open or have a community member who wants to do that as well. So I think that's completely an option.
Great, thank you. Are there any other council members, Rodriguez?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for coming. Sounds exciting. Are you looking for a permanent space or a temporary space?
This is temporary, as I believe the building will be repurposed later on, so it's will be there until that space gets repurposed.
Yeah, and do you have any space in mind, any building so far?
It would be the the Economic and Employment Center, the other half of Job Train that was, I think, previously used by Community Affairs.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Is this related to the Center for Creativity?
Not directly. That's also a good question. They are partners of ours.
Okay.
And Mara and I were actually just talking about this before we came to this meeting, that it is kind of a similar model. But knowing that not, like, everyone who lives here isn't necessarily going downtown to be able to access those resources, having a place where you can walk to may be easier for a lot of folks. So we are talking about a very similar idea, wanting to showcase community artists. I'm sure there's plenty of artists who live in North Fair Oaks, plenty of community members, you know, holding cultural activities throughout the community. So really, really wanting to highlight that.
Excellent. And one, one suggestion would be to really emphasize creating programs for young adults, you know, with in speaking with with other nonprofit organization members, we have come to realize that there's very, very little very few alternatives for that kind of segment, which is concerning, you know. And so I would suggest, you know, to try to heavily implement programs, you know, for for that particular age. And yeah, it sounds like space sharing with other organizations would be a way to go.
Yeah, and just to clarify, when you say young adults, are you thinking teenagers?
Teenagers, sure. I'm not sure if, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two would be still be considered, you know, that. Um, teenagers, sure. Um, I'm not sure if, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two would be, still be considered, you know, that, but, you know, yeah.
Like under twenty-five, but?
That kind of demographic, yeah, which, you know, um, unfortunately, they don't have, um, things to get busy on or interested in. Uh, is a segment of the population that can very easily get in trouble. Uh, so it's best to, you know, offer, um, better alternatives.
And do you see that being like making workshops, you know, like artists visiting and holding a free workshop or?
Yeah, like having workshops and, you know, um, eh, open houses, you know, um, eh, eh, music, uh, contests or, you know, yeah, you name it.
That's great. And is, is there, um, a place to hear that voice that's in the community that would be helpful for me to reach out to, like some kind of youth-focused group or?
Yeah, I would say, um, Redwood City Together, the organization, uh, would be, um, a way to, um, to, eh, channel that information through and actually get feedback, good feedback from them as well. Uh, but also the, uh, PAL Center. Um, and, um, St. Francis Center, yeah, they also have, you know, some programming for, um, eh, for youth and, um, eh, yeah, I'm thinking about the, um, eh, the Boys and Girls Club also on Hoover. Um, I think they may also have, you know, some, some ideas, um, if not, um, if not suggestions, at least maybe needs, you know, to, you know, fill in some of the gaps that they may have in their programming.
Okay, great. That's super helpful. I have a long list now, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, I, I live in an apartment building and we've got these utility boxes up front that are ugly.
Yep.
And I've noticed Redwood City has got some really nice utility box artwork. And I'm like, why can't I have that in North Fair Oaks instead of looking in a gray box? Uh, eh, it'd be cool if we could empower people and kind of bring the art out to the neighborhoods, you know? Um, and, and think about other creative ways, like, uh, hanging decorations, seasonal stuff. I, I like to disperse it rather than just concentrate it. Um, and Palo Alto, Redwood City, there's all these communities and there, there's a different art scene. And we, we actually have a lot of artists, like when they have the artist open studios, you don't really know until you visit and check it out, but, um, there's a lot of talent here. I applaud your efforts and, yeah, help me decorate my utility box.
Great, thank you. Um, and I'm also glad you brought up the utility boxes. Um, that's something our office would really like to implement in the future. I don't think we're there yet. Um, but it is a relatively easy program to duplicate. Um, you're right, Redwood City has an excellent utility box program. Um, many of the incorporated, in fact, almost all of the incorporated cities have a utility box program. Um, I think for us, it would just be, we have to start somewhere and we also, um, would have to just look into funding for that. But I, we were talking about that just yesterday, so I'm glad we're all in the same wavelength here, but I, I agree with you and maybe that could be part of this. Maybe, you know, workshops that we hold for folks are, you know, creating a collaborative design, you know, for boxes or something like that. I think it's totally possible.
Great, thank you. Any other council members? No? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you for having me.
We will now move on to our next agenda item. Public comment?
So we do have one hand raised on Zoom. Um, Gabriela Valencia, you can begin with your public comment.
Hello, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. First of all, I just want to say how appreciative I am of this effort. I think that is, um, something that we truly need more of. Uh, the arts are always welcomed and I think as, as one of the council members mentioned, there are a lot of artists in North Fair Oaks, but we just don't know about them. And I think that having an, an art, uh, a, a space dedicated to art will help us all to be more aware of the art and to be more inspired by the art that surrounds us and hopefully spill it onto the community, as the same, um, council member said. I think that's really important. But I also want to just, um, give us a heartfelt appreciation for the sentiment that was expressed by, and I, I for, I, I am sorry, I didn't get the, the name of the lady who spoke, but I just want to say, truly appreciate that your sentiment of making this space truly accessible to community members, uh, from diverse backgrounds. At least that's how I understood, uh, what you expressed. I think it's really important because there may be some organizations like the Reich Center and other organizations that have um, a fee associated with their, uh, participation. Or even if it's free, many of us in the community don't get to participate because we don't get to know about it. Like I live down the street from the Reich Center, but I've never known about their programs. Um, I don't know if they're, if I need to sign up for something or pay monthly fee or anything because I've never been aware of, of what programming they have. And I think that's one of the, uh, limitations with dealing with private entities. And so I think public, um, public art is really important and I just, I want to say I thank you very much for all your efforts and I look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriela. Last call for public comment, online or in person? Nope. No public comment. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, we will, uh, move on to our next agenda item, presentation from Stanford Health Government Affairs, presentation introduction and update of the new cancer center from, uh, Stanford University. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Lucy Wicks, uh, and we, uh, I'm joined here by?
Hi, buenas noches. I'm Christy Ochoa.
So tonight we're here to talk about a, the fact that Stanford Medicine is exploring a cancer center in Redwood City. Um, and we're really happy to be able to join you here tonight for just a first conversation. Please do not think that this is the first and the last. We are um, have many years ahead of us as we're exploring this opportunity. So I have a couple of slides here. Change the next slide. Thank you. Oh, this is us. Uh, I, um, am Assistant Vice President for Government Affairs for Stanford University. I was fortunate to be able to join Stanford in two thousand eight. Um, and I was talking to some of the staff members here tonight, that even before the council existed, I was coming here when you were um, the North Fair Oaks, like sort of neighborhood association. So it's really wonderful for me to be able to see you all as a formal committee of the San Mateo County. So congrats on that. Um, I also want to just say thank you to Supervisor Gochet's staff for helping us. Thank you Connie and Joshua for helping us get here tonight. And Beau and Kenny for, uh, making it all work behind the scenes. And I'll let Christy now introduce herself a bit more.
Hi, everyone. Um, as I mentioned, I'm Christy Ochoa and I have been at Stanford only a few months now, actually. I am a product of Redwood City, very proud to be so. Um, I am the Assistant Director of Community Affairs for Stanford Healthcare and I am focusing on Redwood City and North Fair Oaks primarily.
So we're going to talk through a couple of, um, slides tonight and then hopefully have a bit more of a conversation. So a little bit about the history of cancer care and innovation for Stanford. So Stanford Medicine currently does have a cancer center. We have different locations throughout the Bay Area. And we have a really deep history of many different breakthroughs when it comes to cancer care and innovation. So, um, as you can see here, we did the first, you know, cancer patients successfully treated with X-rays in the nineteen fifty-six all the way to some of our new lymphoma leads to FDA approvals and breakthroughs within cancer. So we're uniquely positioned as a a cancer center that is both within a university, higher education framing, the research aspect of that, and also the direct Stanford healthcare delivery of care. Next slide. So looking forward, as we have a history of cancer care and innovation, we really are at a moment to be able to reimagine what cancer care and innovation can be. So we think often about just this disease particularly and ultimately looking for a cure. So looking forward, we're looking to diagnose sooner, prevent cancer, address stark inequities that we're seeing within the populations, enable new treatments, progress in the fight against this disease and really better support patients, caregivers and survivors. We do know that many more people are surviving from cancer and they do need continued care as they live their survivorship moments. I think one of the sobering facts here is that there are about four new cancer diagnoses every minute. So this is something that sadly connects many of us as we have family members or people within our lives that are in this cancer journey. And so this is why Stanford is, at this moment, looking ways to expand our ability to provide more care. Next slide. So for our property in Redwood City, um, and our project vision is really about just driving this discovery, really focusing on connecting what we would call the bench-to-bedside-and-back model. So this means that we have researchers that might be working on a, you know, research lab, also being able to then go and see their own patients within a clinic setting and if needed, then helping them to receive, um, inpatient care as well. A big part of this is aligning on a shared community values. We're starting this um, with a community-first approach and we'll be talking about that in the timeline in a couple more slides. So, next slide. So this is where we have our existing property. Many of you might have, um, are probably familiar with it. It's right there. Um, this is actually Redwood City. The entire property is within the city of Redwood City. This is the Bay Road corridor here. For those of you at home, I'm sorry, I'm pointing at the screen, but Bay Road is this street here, which is unincorporated on this side. Um, parts of Redwood City are down here as well. And this entire property is within the city of Redwood City between the Highway one oh one and Bay Road. Um, you'll see the existing buildings that Stanford University built, starting with our approvals in two thousand thirteen. Um, and we started building that and opening these buildings in fall of twenty nineteen, right before COVID then required us to shut them all down. Um, currently, there's also the Stanford Healthcare Outpatient Center here with, uh, some pavilions, parking garages. And men, you might have seen this new building that's under construction with tall steel up in the grit, up in the air right now. This is going to be another specialty outpatient center. What you'll see here is that there's this remaining space, um, which is actually directionally west on the site. Often we think of it north because we're traveling north on the highway. Um, that is where we are envisioning this new cancer center. So next slide. You'll see on the next slide that we have a conceptual idea of putting more clinic space for cancer patients, a research facility here for our School of Medicine and then a cancer-specific hospital. Um, these are all conceptual in location. We are working right now to be able to design this more fully. Um, so we're very early in the process, but hoping to move quite quickly. Next slide. So our tentative project timelines, um, this will be a project that we will submit to the city of Redwood City for, um, review and ultimately their decision to approve or not. Um, we are right here. We did a series, I'll have Christy talk about some of our engagement aspects of it, but we are thinking that we are going to hopefully work with the city to initiate a general plan and a precise plan, just to get a little technical there, and then that will ultimately um, apply for a full project application in the middle of next year, which will initiate the California Environmental Quality Act and a formal environmental review process with the city, which will have a series of many, many public meetings. Um, and we will then also be engaging with the community. So let me pause and turn it over to Christy to talk about that.
So as Lucy mentioned, uh, we did have a couple of community open houses this past October. Um, thank you Kelly for, for stopping by and to, uh, Lisa Gochet for stopping by also. Uh, we are hoping to have more community open houses. The purpose of the, uh, open houses, um, was to gather community input and hear directly from residents. We plan to host additional open houses, as you can see on the projected milestones, um, in early spring and going into the summer. These sessions will help us engage early and, uh, consistently ensuring that we're capturing feedback throughout the entire process. Um, so as Lucy said earlier, we want to make sure that this, uh, connection with the community continues. It's not just us showing up today. Um, we want to continue that, um, feedback and line of communication. Um, early input helps us understand community priorities and shapes our work in ways that best support local needs. Um, your perspective, and I'm speaking to everyone here and our community directly online, uh, really does play a key role in guiding next steps. In addition to open houses, we also will be meeting individually with key community stakeholders, including leaders like yourself and, um, local nonprofits. This, these conversations will help deepen our understanding and ensure that we're hearing from a wide range of voices. Um, we do welcome, uh, and support in expanding our outreach. We're working directly from, uh, in the community, um, with a lot of stakeholders that I'm familiar with personally, being from the community myself. Um, but if anyone here has a suggestion for additional individuals or groups or organizations that we should connect with, we do greatly appreciate those recommendations. Next slide, please. If anyone does have any suggestions or recommendations, please scan this QR code for any feedback. Um, we would love to get feedback right now through, you know, uh, the microphone or comments live. But, um, we also encourage the feedback to be written so that we can go back and, and review them ourselves. We've also included that email on the bottom. It's cancercenter, uh, redwoodcityinfo@stanford.edu. That email goes directly to Lucy and I. We do want to make sure that, again, we are having those, uh, open lines of communication and making ourselves available for any comments, um, today and moving forward.
Great. And, and so if you scan that, um, or visit our website, we were able to post our open house materials there, both in English and Spanish. Um, and there's also a survey that you can take online that sort of helps us receive more feedback. So open to any questions and just a reminder, we hope to come back several times. Uh, I was really happy to be able to come to, um, the North First Community Council over the years as we developed the first part of the Redwood City campus and we really want to make that strong commitment to working with you quite closely, even though you are not necessarily, it's a Redwood City vote, but we really do believe that since you are just part of this community as well. So happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback from you all. I have a pen here and will be taking notes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming this evening and we certainly hope this is, uh, the first of, of many, uh, presentations to come in the future. Uh, council members, any? Yes.
Um, nice to see you all again. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to mostly voice over to my colleagues and any community members. I went to the presentation and saw all of the different designers, architects, and it was a very thoughtful community event, um, albeit not as well-attended as one would like it to be. Um, and I just wanted to voice over for folks here what I raise as my three concerns. The first and foremost is this is incredible. This is a state-of-the-art cancer center and it is centered in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks and I am very concerned that um, this is a center that will be utilized by people not in North Fair Oaks. And so I really pushed these folks here at every stop. Even the architects were like, I don't think I can answer your question. Um, but I'm a, I'm a one-hit wonder. Um, that is my, my number one concern, that we are going to have this amazing state-of-the-art facility sitting in the backyard of people who just get to look at it and don't get to access it. Um, the second is that um, Stanford has been really great about creating community spaces and the wonderful woman who's developing the art space, like uh, that's the other concern, or not concern, the other, um, wishlist item that I raised is what community, um, oriented spaces and, um, gathering places would the community have access to? Um, and the third is there are quite a few trees in that current spot and I wanted just to make sure that we are protecting the canopy. I know there are going to be some obviously replanted trees, but it's a pretty significant area and right off the one oh one, which obviously has no canopy. So that was the third. Um, and I just wanted to share that with my colleagues.
Thank you so much. Any other council member? Any comments? Yes, uh, Councilman Aponten.
Thank you for the presentation. I also was able to go to the open house. And I guess it wasn't what I was expecting. And I guess it wasn't what I was expecting. I thought it was like a formal presentation, kind of like this, but it was more like, there were easels and people were just standing there. So I don't know if the next open houses are going to be like that. I don't know if you can talk to that, or you guys haven't planned that yet.
Can I ask, is there a preference or is there something that you're looking to achieve?
Well, I don't know, like, in the invite, I didn't get, like, the impression that you guys were asking, like, feedback already. Like, it felt really early on. So I was just, like, reading the slides, and I didn't have anything to say. So in the ones coming up in the spring and summer, I guess you guys will go over whatever you heard in the fall, but I guess just a heads up would be appreciated. And then besides that, yes, this is about property in Redwood City, but Stanford already has caused damage in North Fair Oaks. You know, they displaced Generations United, or now called, I think, Levantar. And, you know, that's something that Stanford hasn't really addressed. And that property now is just sitting there vacant. It's ugly. It's in the North Fair Oaks side, I think, of Redwood City. So I think that needs to be addressed. And for you guys to come here and not do that, I feel it's like a slap in the face, but that's just my comment.
Any other comments from council members? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, a few questions. Thank you for your presentation. When is the facility planned to be open?
Well, we don't quite know. So if you could go back on the slides, the timeline, I don't know if that's possible. So we're hoping to submit an application in the middle of next year, hopefully. And then that will initiate the city's formal review. And those tend to be, depending on the Environmental Quality Act, Environmental Impact Report, those can take quite a significant amount of time because they'll be reviewing all the physical impacts of the project. So projected-wise, Stanford doesn't have a choice of when the city would move that along to a vote. But we're hoping that we'll get maybe 2029, 2030 for a vote to the council. But there'll be many public meetings.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Will this be an inpatient outpatient facility?
Both. It'll be expanded clinic space and also an inpatient hospital for cancer patients. So not a hospital that if you broke your leg, you would go to. It would be if you were a cancer patient. And I hope no one has to ever step foot in these buildings. But if you are a cancer patient, you would be welcome.
Yeah, no, I'm asking from the perspective of parking. As you have heard repeatedly, you know, we have parking issues around here. And so I'm hoping that the planification for the building has sufficient space for not only the workers, but also for the patients, you know, coming in and out of the place and the researchers, et cetera. That was mainly the concern. So that is my suggestion. And let me see what else. Oh, and I guess in terms of harmful elements in this facility, I guess that would be discussed during or after the environmental report may be released, right?
Sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
Like, you know, if there may be harmful substances or chemicals, you know, in this facility, some of that would be rendered in the environmental report.
It'd be in the environmental report. And all of those substances are usually monitored by state regulations that we comply with. Yep.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members with any other?
Do you, I wasn't able to address, do you want, did you have a question or you want me to address one of your comments? I'm sorry, I didn't exchange here. I want to make sure that you felt heard.
Since you're here, if you know anything, you can share anything about the property in front of the Second Avenue Park.
Sure. So that property was entitled as the Agora Property. Through a different, a developer came forward and brought that project forward. Half of it is in the city of Redwood City, half of it is within unincorporated San Mateo County. So there was two sets of approvals for that development. They then approached Stanford Healthcare, who did purchase that property. So the property was zoned for renewal as part of the North Oaks Community Plan. And a third-party developer came forward and brought that project forward, which was approved. Stanford Healthcare then purchased that project and then did start the process of communicating with the different groups that were on that property. And happy to talk further about Generations United, it is, or Levantar, but we can talk more details later. We're really happy that they have now found a new home on Hurling Game. And Chrissy and I were meeting with Angie yesterday and really happy to see that they've landed back in the neighborhood.
Any other comments from council members? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for all the comments. Appreciate it.
We have comments?
Yeah, can you just, then I can, yeah, I have a public comment.
Okay, one public comment?
Yes, we do have one hand raised. Gabriela Valencia, you may begin with your comment.
Yes, thank you. I just want to echo the comments by one of the council members that, well, actually, several council members that mentioned that even though this specific project is on the side of Redwood City, it does have a huge impact in the community of North Fair Oaks. And I just want to make sure to emphasize that because I just don't want that to be overlooked. And I know that Stanford sometimes may feel as an institution like they're being good neighbor. But I think being a really good neighbor really means listening to the neighbor and hearing about their concerns and hearing about what is impacting them. And so I think it's important to make sure, like, there is enough parking so that there's no overflow because North Fair Oaks is already tremendously negative-impacted by the lack of space for parking. So that would be a huge issue for us to deal with if this became a problem. But also, in the design of the empty spaces that Stanford is very good at incorporating into their designs, I think it would be really nice if the empty spaces were to be made like in the rest of the campus, where it's space that's accessible by community members that are walking their dogs or just exercising or enjoying the afternoon for families. I think that that would be a wonderful opportunity to make sure that the space can be enjoyed by everyone. And so thank you very much for coming and listening to us.
Last call for public comment for agenda item number six. No public comment. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. We will finally move on to our last agenda item for the evening or for our meeting, an update from the Seminole County Libraries. So we're going to have a presentation from Seminole County Libraries Annual Report 2024-2025 and a program update. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Juan Prado, Vice Chair George Salmon, and community council members. My name is Gina File, and I'm the library manager at North Fair Oaks Library. Thank you for having me a second time. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am happy to share the library's annual report for the fiscal year 2024 to '25. Next slide. Thank you. First established as a county-free library in 1912, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999. Our service area is 351 square miles, made up of our 11 member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. Each of our 13 libraries is part of a larger system, offering countless opportunities for connection and exploration. Next slide, please. Thank you. This year, we rolled out our new five-year strategic plan. Our new plan grounds us in our shared goals: to listen, connect, discover, and engage. As we put our new mission and goals into action, we know our continued success depends on the insights, contributions, and voices of the communities that we serve. Next slide. As a part of our strategic plan, we introduced a new vision and mission to guide our work. Our updated mission is, together we build meaningful connections and inspire lifelong curiosity. Now, I'd like to share how that's coming to life at North Fair Oaks Library. Next slide. At the local level, North Fair Oaks Library had over 80,000 library visitors, and we circulated 30,000 items last fiscal year. Next slide. Here, you'll see a familiar face. Also, at the local level, we saw 5,000 digital downloads this past year. Our program attendance at our North Fair Oaks Library reached over 5,000. And in addition to our popular onsite programs, we make a point to get out into the community. You've likely seen us at Casa Circulo or the Fair Oaks Community Center. Next slide. Accomplishments. We create moments for every stage and phase of life to foster growth and curiosity. I'm excited to share one of our greatest accomplishments from last year. Next slide. Our field trips were a huge success last year. There was one for seniors where we took them to Faiololi. Then we did three field trips for families of North Fair Oaks residents, which improved access by providing a bus. The buses were fully equipped. They had TVs, bathrooms, light snacks that we provided. And we gave them free entrance to Curiosity Academy of Sciences and the Monterey Bay Aquarium, which was over a two-hour drive, but everybody was still in good spirits. The field trips were a wonderful addition for families to spend quality time together. Next slide. And this is where, yes, thank you very much for having me. I'd like to thank the community members, thank our library staff, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Any comments from council members? Yes, Councilman Parise.
Thank you for coming back again. It's always great to hear what you're up to. I have a two-part question. One is, you mentioned the number of materials that were circulated. I know when you were here last year, you talked about some changes you had made to the policy to encourage people to check out books because they were afraid if they lost them, there would be financial penalties. So I'm curious, apologies, I could not really see that screen. So it was on there, and I missed it. My apologies. Is that number based on your initiatives and your proactive communication around this? Is that up from the year before, or where is that at?
So the library circulation was a slight increase from last year to this year. Especially the digital downloads, that almost doubled. So that's from last year to this year.
That's great.
We've done a lot of outreach into the communities this year. So I'd say 2025 is when, because we had a lot less visitors coming into the library, we were trying really hard to go out into the communities. And that's when we would really push satellite libraries, which would have a little collection at different communities. And we would have them check out, all they needed was just a library card, or they can get one quickly. And we would replenish those library materials, and that's how we slightly increased all of our books.
That's great. And my second question is, this field trip program seems wildly successful and exciting. What are the plans for next year?
That's a great question. The Senior Center of North Fair Oaks, they really want us to take them again to more places. So we're open to hearing their ideas. We work closely with the Senior Center. We don't have any plans quite yet, but we want to hear where they want to go first.
Thank you again for all the work that you do and sharing it with us.
Thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you for coming. Nice meeting you. And I wonder if you have heard anything about a new building for yourselves?
I would love to have a new building. We would love to have a bigger space, possibly a makerspace. We do see lots of families that hang out for long periods of time when we serve meals, so after 3:30 all the way until we close. Yeah, we would love it. I haven't heard any recent updates.
Can you talk about a little bit about the constructions or restrictions you have related to space?
I would say, especially when we serve a meal, it's at 3:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. It's packed, and we have a line that is in the library. It's like taking over in the middle of the library. We run out of rooms. We've actually gone to Mary Martinez, the community center, and we booked every room we could for an increase of another tutoring program because we ran out of rooms at the HSA. So we're ready for a bigger space so we can have more programs, more tutoring for kids.
Yeah, thank you. Let us know if we can do anything to help or support your cause. Another question that comes to mind is as related to unhoused individuals coming into the library. How is that working for you and your staff?
For everyone that finds a housing, we always see a new one. Like, tonight, there was a person that, we had never met him before, and it's heartbreaking to see the revolving door of new patrons that are unhoused. I would say it's every other day. So it's good news that they're finding housing, but we're still seeing new people, new unhoused. It's a bit much, but we try to offer what we can. If they need a place to stay, we try to reach out to Life Moves, or we work closely with Life Moves. They come by every month. Yeah, we try to reach out, give them resources they need.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments from council members? No? Right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any public comments in regard to this specific agenda item?
If you would like to comment on agenda item number seven, please use the raise-hand feature on Zoom or bring a speaker slip to the clerk during this time. You'll be given two minutes to speak. No public comment. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. We will now do our report out. So District Four, do you have a report out this evening?
Good evening, council members. I have one quick update, and I also have my team here, Supervisor Gochet and Connie. And Supervisor Gochet will make a quick remark after following me. So, one quick update. We are wrapping up our Measure K Listening Session Tour. These sessions help us understand what the community needs in different communities in our district. And the feedback we receive will help guide how we utilize our Measure K District discretionary fund in the upcoming fiscal year. We have two last listening sessions happening next month. One happening here on December 10th, and the final session will take place on December 16, in Palo Alto. If you guys want more information, all of it is available on our website. If not, definitely just reach out to us, and we can definitely provide you with more information as to when those meetings will happen. And with that, I'd like to welcome my boss, Supervisor Lisa Gochet.
Good evening.
And her assistant.
You can stand right here. Thank you. He does have a title.
He is, he does have a title in my office. He's my junior chief of staff in charge of aviation because he loves airplanes. Okay, it is my understanding that tonight is Ever's last meeting. Um, so I have, I'm here with a few comments. Good evening. Tonight we gather to recognize and thank Ever Rodriguez for his outstanding service to the North Fair Oaks Community Council. Over the years, Ever has been a tireless advocate for our community, ensuring that the voices of residents were not only heard, but respected and acted upon. His leadership has brought people together, neighbors, businesses, and little boy, neighbors, businesses, and community officials to work towards solutions that improve the quality of life in North Fair Oaks. Whether addressing neighborhood safety, supporting beautification projects, or fostering civic engagement, Ever has always led with integrity, fairness, and a deep commitment to the people he serves. Beyond the policies and projects, Ever has been a bridge builder. He has encouraged dialogue, welcomed diverse perspectives, and reminded us that collaboration is the heart of community progress. As you term out of the council, I want to express my deepest gratitude. Ever, your dedication and vision has la- has, has left a lasting mark on Ne- North Fair Oaks. Your legacy will continue to inspire future members of the council and the residents who call this community home. So on behalf of my office, the county, and the North Fair Oaks community, thank you for your service, your passion, and your unwavering commitment. This is not goodbye. It's so long, and I look forward to continuing the partnership and the work that we will do. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We also have accommodation for you. Um, Supervisor, would you like to present the accommodation?
Rachel Everett, do you want to make a quick remark?
Thank you very much. Um, it, it's been, um, it's been a great pleasure, you know, to, uh, um, serve this community. And, uh, it's also been a, a growing experience for me, a learning experience. I value the experience that I've gathered. I think it has made me, um, grown and, you know, um, uh, it is sad to leave the council, but I feel very, eh, strongly that, you know, the council is in, in really good hands. I feel confident that, uh, you guys are an excellent team and, uh, that you will carry forward, you know, the, the, um, the goodness for the community. And so, um, eh, eh, like the supervisor said, this is not a goodbye. I'll still come back and, you know, give you a hard time during public comment. So I'll still be doing good trouble. Thank you.
Uh, I want to personally give, um, Ever, uh, a thanks because when I joined the, the council, he was the chair. And, uh, we really enjoyed his leadership for the many years that he has served, uh, here. Uh, whether he was a chair or not, he's always been a, a leader and a good listener. So, uh, really, really appreciate that. Thank you. On our, uh, report outs, um, do we have, you have anything to report out, council member?
Oh, um, sorry, I'm just so caught in the celebration.
Yeah.
Um, Ever, we're all gonna miss you. And I do hope you come back for public comment all the time. No, I was gonna talk about the Stanford thing and they're on the agenda. Um, the only other thing that is more of a question, not a report out, is, and I wish the sheriff was here. I know he's coming back, is, um, understanding what's happening with any ICE incidents in our county. That is more of a question, not a report out.
No. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Aponte, do you have anything to report out this month?
Um, well, since it is our last meeting of the year, I just wanted to bring up, I guess, the things that I've learned and the five meetings I've had, um, what, what, the pending things in my mind, like the crossing, the railroad crossing over here, that, uh, those, uh, traffic lights are not on yet, so maybe in January we can get an update on that. That'd be great. Um, it was nice to have the new sheriff here. Uh, so we're looking forward to continuing those quarterly sheriff office reports. And lastly, um, congratulations to Ever. Um, like the supervisor said, uh, you did inspire people. You inspired me, I guess, to join because before I ever joined, I, I had heard about you. And, you know, I look forward to, you know, working together off the council. That's all.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Whitney, anything to report out this evening?
I had a great county veterans, um, luncheon last week. The supervisor carried on the tradition from, uh, Supervisor Slocum. And it's just a great community in San Mateo County, but really.
Can you speak into the mic, please, Councilmember Whitney? Can you speak into the mic? Yeah, can you speak into the mic?
In the rear, I'm not.
Thank you.
Communicator.
Thank you.
All right, uh, just with gratitude, the veterans event was awesome. Um, and it's good to see the extended community and the support that's out there. Um, and also gratitude forever. He was the chair when I joined, um, very inspirational. Him and his wife showed me ways to help out during COVID with, uh, different volunteer opportunities. Um, it's a pleasure to have worked with you and look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, and then I'll do my, uh, final report out, um, online. Okay, what do we do? Um, Vice Chair? Sam, George, are you on there?
I'm here. I have nothing to report.
Okay. Anything to report out?
No, sir. Just, uh, want to thank Ever for all the support and everything you've done and good luck in your next endeavors.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Can I say something to the?
Of course, please, for your report.
Um, so, um, I attended the meetings related to hiring the new sheriff, uh, Ken Beaner. And I congratulate the, uh, supervisors, um, eh, for selecting the best candidate under such short time and under such pressure. You guys did great. I was afraid that the guy from San Francisco was gonna take it because he brought like a hundred people, you know, to support him with, uh, comment, but, um, eh, you guys did great. Uh, yeah, thank you for your work.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, just a reminder on my report out, uh, we have an upcoming North Fair Oaks Holiday Celebration on Sunday, December seventh, from twelve to three. Uh, the event will take place on the county parking lot, corner of Second Avenue and Middlefield Road. And there is a flyer there. Um, there will be a Santa, not me, but a, a real Santa. Um, and a petting zoo food and, so there, we have an opportunity as a council, if we want to have a table there or a presence there, um, it's three hours, you can tell to three. So that's something that we can discuss and it'd be great to do community outreach in that place. So that would be great, uh, to do that. And, um, yeah, yeah, our next meeting, eh, will be January fifteenth. It will be a study session. And it'll be at the Manzanita Room downtown at the county, new county facilities. We'll do our study session there, uh, January fifteenth. And if there's no other further comments, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Okay, then, uh, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.